Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Please silence your cell phones and any other devices. I would like to ask the prayer will be by Mr. Pastor Wayne Golder and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman George. Please stand.
Most kind to God, I've come with the mighty name of Jesus. Lord, we ask that you keep your heavenly arms wrapped all around the city of Gochea. Lord, guide us, lead us, oh God, let us make rightful decisions, oh God. Let us include all in this community, oh God, but we all stand as one and only thank you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I'll pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman George, and thank you Pastor Golder. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy?
Yes, Mayor. Consent to the item number one. This is correction on page two of September 10th, 2024 minutes, and pages 25, 75, and 128 on the number 17, 24 minutes. Consent to the agenda item number two, a revised contract with West Pro, and we need to remove business agenda item number eight. Thank you. Plan the problem.
Any other changes? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order of approval with changes?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Galot. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman George. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Shancy.
Yes, the city of Gochea's Corescent Through the Decades event will be this Sunday, October 6th, starting at 12:00 PM at the former City of Ramal property. Outdoor movie night featuring teenage mutant ninja turtles, Mutant Mayhem, will be October 18th, starting at 6:30 PM at the City of Gochea Sports Complex. The Gochea Mullet and Music Festival will be October 19th, from 9:00 AM until 6:00 PM at the former City of Ramal property. The Tasty Thursday will be October 24th, starting at 11:00 AM at the former City of Ramal property.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That brings us to our presentation agenda, and we do not have one, so that brings us to our business agenda item number one. Discussion regarding the appointment of Doug Mansfield as Civil Service Commissioner by Ms. Shancy.
Yes, Mayor. I think he is up for reappointment. So I think the council just needs to reappoint him if you'd like him to come himself.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion to appoint Doug Mansfield as Civil Service Commissioner?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Galot, a second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, this is what we voted on, the one we voted on?
No, sir. He's been serving for a long time. They start terms, and his is coming up, so did you leave more to reappoint him to serve for another two remaining act?
No more.
Councilman Galot?
No comment.
Councilman College?
Mr. Mansfield's always held his position with honor and integrity, and I appreciate him bothering here for this position again.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, Councilman College said, yes, Doug Mansfield's been here a long time and a very good asset to the Civil Service Commission. That's all.
Councilman Elbin?
I've worked with Mr. Mansfield for many years, under civil service, and he's been very fair and impartial. We haven't always seen eye to eye on a lot of things, but his decisions were always fair, and I'm glad to see he's still willing to hold his position and assist our employees. So I...
Thank you. I echo what the councilmen have said, that Mr. Mansfield, he also is a veteran. He's also got a GI museum here. He's served for a long time, and he continues to want to serve the citizens and serve on that capacity of the civil service. So if we could also send a letter thanking him with our signatures, I would appreciate it. We have a motion by Councilman Galot, a second by Councilman College. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Resolution approving the FY 2024 budget amendments by our city clerk is not here this evening, so Ms. Shancy.
Yes, Mayor. This is the cleanup budget amendments for fiscal year, last fiscal year. All it really does is it includes any additional revenue you receive. It real allocates the money based on your actual expenditures and needs. This, we cannot find, this is not effective cash balance.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to approve the FY 2024 budget amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
Great job on our budget for all those involved. Year after year, we're able to continue to eat net bones and put more in our cash balance and achieve more than we ever have, so thank you for all those involved.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Galot?
A bullet in that chair.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson? Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
I just want to thank our clerk and our city manager for their work and all the directors and their staff to work together to make everything happen here in Gochea on a small budget. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our business agenda item number three. Approval of a resolution to issue general obligation bonds or enter into a loan with the Mississippi Development Bank, not exceeding 2 million, to finance various municipal improvements, by our city manager, Ms. Shancy.
Yes, Mayor. This is the 2 million dollar bond that was just a GL bond that we discussed last meeting. You approved an intent resolution, which was the first step. This is the second step in issuing that bond. It's just a continuation of what we've already discussed. Ms. Fairbanks, your attorney is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? None. I just want to thank you, Ms. Fairbanks, for coming down to be here if we have any questions and to explain to the citizens and the council and staff if anybody has any, and we appreciate all your hard work to look into, continue to do projects in Gochea with the amount of money we have, so we thank you. Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution to issue the general obligation bond or enter into a loan with Mississippi Development Bank, not exceeding 2 million, to finance various municipal improvements?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Galot. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
I just echo what you say. It's always a pleasure working with Sue and her company, and I know that Paula enjoys it as well, so thank you for always being present. That says a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Galot?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
Okay. And I forgot, we also should thank our government consultants, Steve Pittman, for his hard work and partnership on the finance side to partner to make sure everything is done also. So we got a motion by Councilman Galot, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Approval of the resolution to issue revenue bonds or enter into a loan with the Mississippi Development Bank, not exceeding 5,300,000, to finance the city's water and sewer system improvements, by Ms. Shancy.
Yes, Mayor. Same situation as you issued the intent resolution prior to this. This is the next step in the process. However, this is a revenue bond, which will be paid from your Infrastructure Modernization Act funds. It is for the completion of the South Gochea 3 million gallon a day water treatment plant, which is supposed to be awarded by the Corps in November, and it is for the overage on the LAR, 1 million gallon a day LAR plant, which is currently, you've got EPA funds, and this is to match it, to complete that. And then the remainder is for a $900,000 max for your 592, which encompasses five different projects, one of which is West Park Drive, some copper piping, and some water and sewer issues, and a lift station. This will enable you to maximize and leverage your Infrastructure Modernization Act funds so that you can borrow money long-term, pay for these huge infrastructure improvements, but still have money left to do water and sewer and paving within the city.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy.
And again, Ms. Fairbanks is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any public comments on business agenda item number four?
I do have one question.
Just take your first and last name and your question.
Ah, Mark McGarrett, is this just for the South Gochea, or is this for citywide?
Citywide.
So you talk, you talking about the water treatment improvements? So the water treatment plants, we had the capital improvement study done with a 12-year plan, and one of those things was how to make the cities, everybody in the cities, water clear. The recommendation was for one plant, one 3 million gallon a day plant in South Gochea, and a 1 million gallon a day plant at LAR. And the combination of those two plants, along with the ionization plant, would make all the citizens' water treated and clear, and that's what we're trying to do.
Question.
That answer it for you, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Okay. Any other public comments? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution to issue revenue bonds or enter into a loan with the Mississippi Development Bank, not exceeding 5,300,000, to finance the city's water and sewer system improvements?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I'm just grateful that we're getting some development done in West Park to alleviate some of the drainage problems that I'm having. Thank you. No more comments.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Galot?
Did I hear the word paving in your explanation?
You heard the word paving in the sense that you're leveraging your Infrastructure Modernization Act funds, just kind of like we used it to do Sea Cliff when we read in Sea Cliff. Instead of using all of your money up towards these two, three things, it enables you to pay for it over time and have enough left to do things like pave roads, do water and sewer improvements, things like Sea Cliff that you've been doing. It just enables you to continue to do that while paying for these things. That's what I mean.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Galot. Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
And I just echo what I said earlier, again, on business agenda item number three, with all the staff and Sue Fairbanks and Steve Pittman and everybody involved. We got a motion by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman College. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five. Approve the increase in charges related to solid waste collection and disposal by Ms. Shancy.
Sorry. This is, if you recall, what we're going to have to raise the garbage fees, the cost that belongs to the citizens by $10, we published, which is required by law. That publication you intended, now you are officially instating the $10 increase. That's what this does.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion to increase charges related to solid waste collection and disposal?
Regretfully, yes.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Galot. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
So we're going to just take a fake?
October 7th.
Okay.
Councilman Galot?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
Once again, I just want to thank the, you got something coming. Go ahead.
Just people be aware that this is all because of JCUA increasing their rates?
No, this is waste, garbage.
Garbage.
Waste, yes.
Garbage increasing their rates.
Yeah, but the good news is this will remain static for six years.
That's right.
So, but you have an option to extend for four or 12 years.
That's right. Okay. I'm thinking JCUA.
No, that was a dollar.
They're sending in my brain.
Um, I just want to thank the city manager working with the service providers during the RFP process, and as it's hard for us to have to vote on an increase, you got to look at all the years prior to that, that we didn't have increases, and the cost of everything today, they went up. But as Ms. Shancy, you just heard, it's another six-year contract with four-year, up to four-year extension period, so you're looking at another long time of not having increases. So we thank you, even though we all have to incur the cost, we appreciate all your hard work too, and the service provider for working with you. We have a motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Galot. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number six. Approve the FY 2025 commercial insurance renewals by Ms. Shancy. Ms. Montgomery is out.
Yes, Mayor. We got our quotes for this year renewal. It went up by $28,450.55, which is actually really good, because you're now going to have a full year of insurance in the sound, which you have not had in the past. There were minimum increases in general liability and law enforcement liability, so we feel like you got a really good quote this year for your commercial insurance.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a motion by council to approve the renewal of a commercial insurance policies through Hub International for property casualty and liability insurance coverage for FY 2025?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman George. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
Compared to the increases that I've seen over the last year, that is an excellent number, so just want to put that out there. No other comment?
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Galot?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
I just want to thank all the staff that worked on it and appreciate your hard work and Hub International. We got a motion by Councilman George, second by Councilman College. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number seven. Authorization to advertise for bids for an annual paving contract for the City of Gochea by Ms. Ramona Morgan, but Ms. Shancy is going to take it.
You've never had one of these before, so I just wanted to kind of give you a little background. The law allows you to have an annual paving contract for up to five years. So what that does is, rather than have to bid every single time you want to get something paved, it gives you a static price. Now, this bid package here does have a fuel adjustment for the asphalt part only, but it, and that can fluctuate up and down. But it enables you to issue POs based on this annualized payment contract, and it also helps you to get a better price. So this is basically authorizing going out for bids for that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number seven? Do we have a motion by council to authorize to advertise for bids for an annual paving contract for the City of Gochea?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Galot. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, so you don't think we would get a better rate from just bidding it out each time that this is?
No, sir. It's the bond that makes it more attractive.
Okay. I got you. No more comment.
Councilman Galot?
What is going to happen with the money we get from the county or the roads that they pay for here? Would that be in addition to what we're going to do?
The law says that the county must give you one half of the road payments collected within the city of Gochea, which they do, and they have to do. They retain half. They have been cooperating and paving roads, which the payment was to them. But this, it'll work however you want it to work. If we're not getting any roads paved, you can use this to pave roads, or you can use this to pave extra roads in addition to what they might have created. It just gives you the freedom to have your roads paved when you need to.
So...
Within your budget, of course.
Within the budget of what we allow for this item here, correct?
Well, this is going to come back and tell you how much per time asphalt is, or yes, and we can just issue POs based on that. But we will only pave roads based on the list of roads you approved. We'll just issue POs for that, so that answers your question.
Can somebody tell me how far the county's behind on what they're paying?
I can't remember. My momma may can, but they paid about, I don't know, $100,000, I think, and then...
It paid?
What's the time I forget the payment company?
What list have they?
When I got moved to a state job, and we were already two years behind.
So we're two years behind from the county, correct?
What they agreed to pay for us, yes.
What they've agreed to pay for us. Now, if we approve this, can we go get some of those roads and then move that money down to other ones?
Yes, sir.
Because we got people that we have talked around, we're going to pave roads in a certain year, and it ain't happened.
You absolutely can do that.
Okay. Does everybody be aware of that? We're going to get an option where we'll be able to pave some roads, in my opinion, a lot quicker, I would think, correct?
That's the hope.
As long as the funds are there.
So all listening out there, people that's been fighting about roads being paved?
That all you got, Councilman?
That's all I've got.
Councilman College?
I just appreciate the bid sheet. It's a good breakdown, I felt looking at it. I don't know if you had any assistance for Mr. Seymour or not, but it's a good breakdown.
I have a little block.
I look forward to this, and I'm curious to see how the price is going to come in. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
Councilman Galot, got my answers, my questions answered, and I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
I just want to thank Ms. Shancy and all that worked with her to get this. I think it's needed, because sometimes others are running behind, and we should be able to move forward so we are getting things done, and the citizens deserve to have nice roads if the funding's available, so I look forward, like Councilman College, seeing the bids come in. We have a motion by...
I got one more question. When we talked about the bond and utilizing money for projects of paving, this will be in addition to that?
No.
The bond, the revenue bond, does not include any paving projects.
People use them on projects when you redo them, just you use Sea Cliff as a, for instance.
Yeah, I did, but what I'm saying is, you get, I'm going to use this example, you get $1.2 million a year of Infrastructure Modernization Act funds, okay?
Right.
If you take all of your Infrastructure Modernization Act funds that pay for a water treatment plant, you got Ziva. If you take that $1.2 million and issue a $5.3 million bond, you're going to use $500,000 to pay on the bond, which leaves you $700,000 to continue to do things like Sea Cliff and that sort of thing. It's not part of the bond, but the bond makes it possible if that...
Freezes up some money.
Which would be improving roads.
Yes, sir.
In neighborhoods also.
Yes, sir.
Along with this, plus from the county.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's it.
We got a motion by Councilman Galot, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number eight. It was removed because they had cleaned up. And that now brings us to business agenda item number nine. Approval of the docket of claims. They already been presented to us by our city clerk. They were provided online for the citizens and the council, so do we have any public comments on the docket of claims? Do we have a motion from council?
Make a motion. We approve the docket of claims, provided that all entries there are on, are true, correct, properly entered, not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman Galot?
No comment.
Councilman?
College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. They're all approved in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one. Does anybody want to pull one? Nobody. So, do we have a motion to approve? Consent agenda item number one. Approval of the minutes from the budget meeting held September 10th, 2024, and recess council meeting held September 17th, 2024. Two. Approval of the amendment to the August 20th, 2024 recess council meeting minutes revised. Three. Approval of the municipal compliance questionnaire for FY 2023 to 2024. Four. Authorization of city petty cash funds. Five. Approval of water and sewer adjustments for October 2024 in the amount of $9,047. Six. Authorization to remove broken furniture and equipment from the City of Gochea's inventory. Seven. Approval of the updated inventory spreadsheet of the City of Gochea's assets. Eight. Approval of the request for Mississippi Gochea Community College for the use of four portable lakes. Nine. Authorization for the Recreation Department to accept the donation of four fig trees to be planted at George Martin City Park. Ten. Approval to accept a monetary donation for the City of Gochea's Cruising Through the Decades event. Eleven. Resolution approving closure of roads and traffic control measures as described in the application for a special event permit submitted by Gochea High School Alumni Association. Twelve. Authorization to advertise for bids for the San Lorenzo and Cypress Ferry Point Stream Bank stabilization and debris sediment removal project. Thirteen. Authorization for ATL Special FX to display pro-technic FX at the Sound Amphitheater on October 12th, 2024. Fourteen. Approval of the revised staff plan for certified police officers. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda item one through 14?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda, and that is for citizen comments. And first up is Mr. Charles Moore.
I'm Charles Moore, and I live in 1820 West State Farm, Gochea, Mississippi. I'm still actually, let's count, just to step down for a remark he made about African Americans, a year and, over a year and a half ago, or a year and three months, or whatever. I've been here 47 years in Gochea. I love Gochea, and I want to see Gochea grow, be a better city, but people like Russ Anderson need to step down with that remark. He said a ledge, but hey, he hadn't proven it, so I want him to prove his stuff if he didn't. He...
That's a ledge remark, right?
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
A ledge remark? Is that what you said?
A ledge remark.
You should have proved it. All right, thank you.[1739.32] Uh, thank you.
Ben Coleman, 14, 20, 30, come on. I want to just address sin with, with love. We, we, I, God said, love, put God first, put your neighbor's second, and put yourself third. So I want to let you know that. I want to get to know the police officers. I'd like to get to know y'all, and I'll get a ticket, I can... But anyway, college probably need, they need love. College probably need a playground for the children. And I think there'll be a lot, a lot more crime in this neighborhood if they can get that, like, Baker Park, yeah, you know, Cubber Basketball Court. I think it's asking too much. So if we can do that, if you guys in the budget to address that.
Why are you asking for that, Mr. Coleman?
Over at, not College Park, but, uh, Camber Square.
I knew where you were talking about. I knew where you were talking about, but I wanted you to clarify.
Yeah, okay. But if we can address that, and let's pray for our men and women that serving all over the world. There is a lot of wars going on, and there are even dangers at this time, right at this time. So let's pray for them, and let's show one another love, and that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Okay, that brings us to, next on the study agenda is council comments. I would like to recognize somebody here tonight, before we have our council comments. We have a special guest. We have our city manager's mother, Ms. Sue Nations, here from Brookhaven, Mississippi. And we are just blessed that you're here visiting and sharing your lovely daughter with us, who works very hard here in the city of Gochay. So we hope you enjoy your visit.
Thank you. I want to tell you, do it.
Also, I just want to ask that we have a moment of silence for our sister states, Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, and all the victims. I think we should have a moment of silence, North Carolina, for all them at this time. Thank you. Next, Councilman George.
I have no comments tonight.
No?
Well, I do have a comment. Raise your hand in this room if you have been to the Sound Amphitheater.
Wow, look at that.
I need a few more hands raised up next time I ask that. But there's been several concerts we've had, and regardless, you know, of a few minor setbacks with weather or logistics, they were quickly corrected and improved. We've had an exceptional year with our huge projects that took force back in April. I'm very proud of that facility, and I'm very proud of everyone that was involved, instrumental in making sure it happens, from our city manager to Sue Fairbanks, to everybody, Ramona, and Forty-Six Entertainment, and the council up here that put in some hard work, and Josh, you know, it really is a group effort from the entire city. And I think that is something that, as we come to the end of this year, we should look back on and be very proud that Gochay is not a bruise on the coast anymore. We have cities looking at us and wanting to figure out how we did it, and want to know why they didn't do it first. So thank you, and I look forward to the rest of the shows we have this year. Hopefully, we have a couple more on the books. But it's been a time for, you know, council to get together and enjoy a show, and, you know, bring in legislators and developers and show them what we have to offer, more than just land. We have a lot of entertainment, from the nature trails to Miranda Lambert. So it's pretty impressive, if you ask me. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
All right, you want me some R&B shows up now, you want to get everybody? Switch it up a little bit. But now, just thanks for everybody for coming out, and even those that made comments, you know, it's, it's good to speak your mind and stand for what you stand on. That's pretty much all I have. I don't have much to say today.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Welcome back home from work in art.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Gilat?
Ms. Sue Nations, I do hope you enjoyed tonight. It was a pleasure having you here with us, and maybe you can come back again another time and enjoy this illustrious crew we have in this house tonight. With that said, I also echo what Councilman George says. That was one of the main reasons I got back on the council for another four years, is to see this city grow, and it's happening. And I want to thank everybody that has been involved, this entire council and this entire city staff. Everybody has done together a fantastic job to make this city grow.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman College?
I guess I'm just gonna be a broken record. Yes, this past weekend, I mean, we had two concerts, not just one, but two concerts. We're at the Lambert on Friday, and then Jewel and Melissa at the Rachel Saturday, and both events were very heavily attended. This could not have been done without everybody having a vision, our city manager bringing that vision to fruition, working with her team, bringing in the right staff, bringing in the right people, and having our support to get this co, to come. This is the biggest asset this city's ever had. We haven't realized yet the sales tax and the revenue were coming in yet, because it sits about three or four months behind, but this is a huge asset that's gonna draw more and more people to develop in our city, in our area. And I just cannot give enough kudos to our city manager for helping make that to, come to fruition. Jamie Johnson is this weekend, so if you don't have tickets, go ahead and buy them now, because it's gonna be heavily attended also. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, echoing on Councilman College and Councilman George's comments on amphitheater. The amphitheater is, is blowing it out. It is almost packed out for three or four concerts now. And it's really nice to see that many people coming to town, a lot of them from out of town, coming to this venue. It would be nice if we could hear the ticket sales, and then they could hear what it is, so we can all brag on that. Can we get that in the near future, something for the ticket sales of some of the concerts? That'd be nice, thank you. That's all I got.
With all the events that are going on in the city, and all the, you know, activities that employees are working on, I want to thank each and every employee of the city of Gochay, the directors, administrators, for the job you do to make this city work and run each day. It's well appreciated, and it's noticed. Another thing is, I got some calls today in reference to the graveling bridge being shut down. Is there an update to how long that's gonna be shut down, or?
I talked to the engineer, because that was regarding the railroad, and, oh, a month ago, and they said they were halfway through, and we could expect another year of closure.
That's quicker than... That's really quicker than the initial estimate of two years.
Okay. That's all I have.
What was the initial estimate?
Two years.
Oh, was it two years?
Yeah, when Mike Langdon started obtaining funds for.
Is that...
Back in old nine.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin. I echo what all the fellow councilmen have said about the Sound Amphitheater, but Nathan Ball with Forty-Six Entertainment and Noah, all their staff, Sean works for Forty-Six Entertainment back there and does a great job. And I just think everybody, if you've not been there, I encourage you to go, because everybody's having a good time, from our youth to all age groups, enjoying themselves in a nice environment. And we're just blessed. And when I go to the northern part of the state last week, and Tunica with fellow elected officials sitting on the Mississippi Municipal Board of Directors, and all of them boasting what they hear about it, it's just a joy to be able to hear Gochay is being talked about on an economic development scheme now than in the past. What do you have going on? Now they know what's going on, and you can brag on it. So it's just great, and I thank you, Ms. Shancy, and all involved. I wish you safe travels home, Ms. Fairbanks, for coming down once again and all your hard work. I want to thank H2O, our service provider, who continues to work on a backlog, but they are steadily dedicated and working hard, and your hard work does not go unnoticed. Waste Pro, we thank you for your hard work and continued support of various things going on in the city. Ms. Nations, once again, it's a pleasure to have you here, and I'm looking forward to seeing you much more here in Gochay and coastal Mississippi.
Thank you. This is your playground, and it's beautiful.
Thank you, I'm glad you enjoyed it. Your daughter worked hard with the people to get that to happen, so we thank you for sharing her. Mr. Anthony Snow came to the meeting, and he had to leave, but he wanted me to announce that they have a community fellowship on the grounds of the former Martin Bluff Baptist Church this Saturday at 10 o'clock. It's now called Healer Nation, and Dr. Capehart is the minister there and owner, and they're just gonna have free fellowship, free food, just go fellowship on the grounds up there starting at 10 o'clock. I also want to thank, we have some volunteers here tonight from the alumni, if y'all can stand. They are working and partner. I want to thank Chastity Bilbo and Ms. Shancy, the staff who's worked with them to make us have our first ever Gochay High School alumni tailgate before homecoming, and they have put a lot of work into it volunteering, and I just thank you all, and look forward to having a successful event and show people we can have fun here in Gochay. Also, a reminder, homecoming is coming up. I encourage you, if you have a business or whatever, to reach out to the home, High School, and get a float in the homecoming parade that will be not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday. I thank all of our staff, like everybody has said, and a special thanks, if y'all can relay it, to Brenda, who works in our projects and grants department. She brought one of our citizens to the Sound Amphitheater to a concert this past Saturday night. And to see the citizen who lives here be able to come, she picked him up and brought him and everything, that's touching, that is caring. Brenda, a city employee, went and that extra mile for a citizen to be able to give that citizen something otherwise they would not be able to do. So we're blessed here in Gochay to have great employees, but kudos to Brenda. And then Howie, of course, back-to-back concerts, he sort of oversees that out there, the sound, and gets with Ms. Shancy all the time, but he's there from sunup to sundown. Back-to-back concerts, he was just blowing and going, and I can't thank him enough. And Ms. Shandabang, who puts the little gift baskets together for Ms. Shancy, for the artist, they always are nice and got a coastal touch. So thank you all for your hard work. Thank our public safety and our parks and wrecks, and look forward to all of our events coming up in the coming weeks. That brings us to city manager comments. Ms. Shancy? City clerk is out, but we got our deputy clerk here, Ms. Dickerson. Do you have anything?
No.
We are glad to have you here this evening, too. City attorney, Mr. Dennis, do you got anything?
Yes, sir.
No comments?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to recess until October the 15th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m.?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Motion carries.